Happy New Year, everyone. We're going to be starting in two minutes. If you would like to sign up to speak, please do not hesitate to go to the secretary and get a form and fill it out. Thank you. Happy New Year, everyone. Thank you all for coming out. It is three o'clock, and this year's theme is Colleen is Future Focus, Putting the Things Behind and Moving Toward the Future. So we are very excited to kick off 2025. Let the record show that all council members are present. So I'm hoping that everyone that would like to speak have already signed up. All right. We will have the invocation, and we will have the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Solomon. Would you all please stand? As I pray, as I pray in my own faith, you pray in yours. Most gracious Father, we thank you once again for your many blessings that you have bestowed upon this city, upon the leadership, upon the staff members, the residents, and our community partners. We ask that this 2025, that our staff and our council be focused on our future, moving the city forward, using the resources that we have to meet the needs of our residents. We ask that you continue to watch over our men and women that serve this great nation, Father God. Watch over their families. Thank you for those who serve and continue to serve. And these things we ask in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Solomon. All righty. So with that being said, can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Councilmember Solomon?
Make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Councilmember Board?
Second.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. The motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, council. We will have our work session. Counsel, you have three minutes to speak, three times each. We'll discuss Agenda Items 1 through 13 for the January 7th, 2025 regular session. There's no further actions until we go into the regular session. I'm asking council to please be focused. No sidebar conversations, so we can move through this agenda. Madam Secretary?
CMin 25001, consider minutes of regular City Council meeting of December 3rd, 2024.
Madam Secretary?
CMin 25002, consider minutes of regular City Council meeting of December 10th, 2024.
Madam Secretary?
RS 25001, consider a memorandum resolution awarding request for proposal 2505, custody services to U.S. Bank in the estimated amount of $17,100 annually.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Happy New Year, Mrs. Tanglin.
Happy New Year. Good afternoon, councilmembers, mayor. This item is for the custody services. In October 24, 2023, the City Council approved the transition of the City of Colleen's banking depository from BNC Bank to the JP Morgan Chase Bank. As a result, BNC Bank will discontinue its custody services with the city. In partnership with a metered public funds, the City's investment consultant, staff developed and conducted a request for proposal process to identify qualified financial institutions for custody services. Two proposals were received, U.S. Bank and Extra Co-Bank. The evaluation criteria is listed here. And after reviewing the proposals, staff determined that U.S. Bank offered the best overall value and service for the city's custody needs. The estimated annual cost is $17,100. Staff recommends that the City Council award the request for proposal number 25-05 for custody services to U.S. Bank and authorize the city manager or designate to execute the agreement and any supplemental agreements or amendments as allowed by state and local law. I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for that report. And one question, how does this benefit the City of Colleen?
Custody services is services that the bank gives for the custody of the bonds. So whenever we purchase bonds or securities, it goes through a bank where it keeps, a bank keeper, and that's the custody service that we get from that bank. Before, BNC gave us those services, and we offset it with our credit earned. But now, we don't have a compensated balance that we're supposed to keep, like $8 million to cover all the fees. Now, we invest the funds, and then we just pay for the bank services because it's a lot more beneficial for the city, since the interest are a lot higher.
Thank you so much for that. That is very important that not only our council know, but our residents know that it does benefit
Yes, ma'am.
the city. Any more questions? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is this for a set period of time? Do we need to renew this service so often, or indefinite?
So we have the agreement set annually, but we are planning to keep it for at least five years. When we do our depository account, RFP, again, in four years, we're trying to put that into the same RFP. That way, maybe we can get the same benefits from the bank. JP Morgan does offer these services, but it's a lot more expensive. That's why we didn't go with JP Morgan. But we're trying to put that into the RFP for the next depository bank. So we're planning to have it for at least five years.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Madam Secretary?
RS 25002, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing City of Colleen officials to apply for, accept, decline, modify, or cancel the grant application for the Motor Vehicle Crime Prevention Authority Grant Program to establish a program targeting vehicle and catalytic converter theft.
Thank you. Happy New Year, Chief Lopez.
Happy New Year. Good afternoon, Mayor. I'm April Tim, counsel. I'm here this afternoon to present a proposal to accept a grant. It has not been granted yet. This is just a proposal to present to the Texas Motor Vehicle Crime Prevention Authority Board. And next week, on the 16th to 17th, after travel to San Antonio, present the proposal. And then if they grant it, I'll come back and propose it again. But it's just a requirement for the grant application is to have a resolution in place before we present. All right. The Colleen Police Department has submitted an application for the Senate Bill 244, Catalytic Converter Grant through the Texas Motor Vehicle Crime Prevention Authority. The grant is a key component of the department's strategic initiative to address the ongoing challenges of vehicle and catalytic converter thefts and violent crime by using advanced technology and real-time data analysis. The advanced technology is a system that uses automatic license plate readers, recognition cameras to help law enforcement prevent and solve crime. It is an efficient, cost-effective solution designed to enhance public safety while respecting privacy rights. The Colleen Police Department will also hold quality meetings with internal stakeholders, partner law enforcement agencies, and focus community partnerships to combat thefts and improve public safety across the city. The MVCPA requires a resolution from the governing authority agreeing to the terms of the grant as a prerequisite for considering our application. If awarded, the grant funding will be used to expand the department's technology capabilities and camera systems, enabling more effective monitoring of areas with high criminal activity throughout the City of Colleen. The total project funding is $500,000 estimated. The funds will be provided by the grantee, which is $400,000, and the cash matched by the city for $100,000. If the grant is awarded, both the grant revenue and expenditure will be incorporated into the bid year budget amendment in April. Funds for the maximum $100,000 portion, with the cities' portion, have been identified in the Police General Fund and State Seizure Operational Accounts. Staff recommends that the City Council authorize the city manager or designate need to serve as the city's official representative to apply for, accept, modify, or cancel the grant application for the Motor Vehicle Crime Prevention Authority Grant Program, as well as to execute all necessary documents related to the grant. The City of Colleen must also commit to ensuring that any misuse or loss of grant funds will be fully reimbursed to the MVCPA. You have any questions?
Thank you, Chief Lopez, for that update. I have one quick question. How does this benefit the residents in the City of Colleen?
This is going to allow us to place more cameras throughout the City of Colleen quicker than we normally will. Currently, we have our cameras set up with the Real-Time Crime Center. We're not live operationally yet. We anticipate that. Real-Time Crime Center will be open by mid-February, end of February. But these cameras will supplement the cameras that we already have. And they're going to be strategically placed on light poles, traffic camera poles, throughout the city.
Thank you. And also, thank you, council, for always working with the first responders to put safety as one of our top priorities for the City of Colleen. Thank you, chief, for that report.
All right, thank you.
Madam Secretary?
RS 25003, consider a memorandum resolution approving a lease agreement with CSI Aviation Incorporated at the Colleen Regional Airport.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Happy New Year, Mr. Provost. How are you?
Good, Madam Mayor. Happy New Year to you and council, city manager, and the citizens of Colleen. Before you, is the approval of the aviation hangar lease agreement. This is for hangar number two. On February 28th of 2023, the City Council awarded a contract to NASCO in the amount of $5,335,019.32 for the construction of a second corporate hangar at the Colleen Regional Airport. This hangar is now ready for occupancy. Staff has negotiated a lease agreement with CSI Aviation to lease a 13,200-square-foot hangar, number two, and office space at the Colleen Regional Airport. The term of the lease agreement is for a period of six and a half years, beginning February 6, 2025, and ending July 31, 2031. The agreement will authorize the tenant to conduct air transportation and related general aviation operations, including but not limited to passengers, charter, air cargo, medical flight services, aircraft maintenance, and fixed base operation services at the Colleen Regional Airport. Staff has negotiated a lease agreement with CSI Aviation. The lease agreement provides that the tenant will pay rently fees at a monthly rental rate of $8,846.67, not including various monthly security, telephone, and information technology fees within the lease. This will provide an annual revenue to the airport of $106,160.4. Revenues will be deposited in the K.R. Enterprise Fund Account. Staff recommends the approval of the lease agreement with CSI Aviation for a six-and-a-half-year period beginning in February 6, 2025, and authorizing the city manager to execute same. Additionally, authorize the city manager to execute all addendums and lease actions to the agreement, including termination to the extent allowed by the city charter and the laws of the state of Texas. Pending any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Provost. My question is, how does this benefit? Happy New Year, Mr. Wilson. I see you in the back. You can come up if you would like. How does this benefit the city and the residents of Colleen?
So CSI Aviation's been a great partner since they moved in, and they moved from Albuquerque, and they've continued to expand. They've added over 70 high-paying jobs to the community and continue to add more. And so this is just a continuation of what we started many years ago, and it's only going to get bigger.
Yes, sir. I agree with you. I had the opportunity to speak to the owner. And as mayor, I do a lot of that building partnerships. And I am so excited that they chose Colleen.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, your staff and team, Mr. Wilson, Mr. Provost.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Secretary?
RS 25004, consider a memorandum resolution rejecting bids for bid number 2427 for terminal security improvements at the Colleen Regional Airport.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Happy New Year, Mr. Wilson.
Happy New Year, ma'am, counsel. The item we have before you tonight is basically to reject a bid for security improvements at the regional airport. Just a little bit of background. The city advertised a bid to replace the airport's security cameras, access control system, and servers with new integrated hardware to meet current and future needs. The project's funded by an FAA Airport Infrastructure Grant through the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law, or the bill. The 10% managing requirement was to come from the Pasture Facility Charge Fund. Advertising began on May 1st, or I'm sorry, May 12th, 2024, appeared in the local newspaper, as well as the city's website. Additionally, it was advertised on multiple statewide bidding sites. Pre-bid meeting was held on May 21st, 2024, with eight general contractors, three subcontractors attending. Bids were open on July 3rd, and the city received two bids as follows. GTS Technologies for $1.2 million. Valcorp Enterprises for $2.5 million. A thorough review of each bid package was completed by staff and the airport's consultants. The apparent lowest bidder was GTS Technology Solutions. During the review process, it appeared that the proposed products did not meet the Buy American requirements of the AIG. After discussions with the contractor and several consultations with FAA, it is determined that the GTS bid, as proposed, did not meet the requirements of the AIG in regards to Buy American. The bid from Valcorp Enterprises was considerably more than the budget for this project. Therefore, staff's recommendation is to reject the bids, both bids. Staff recommends the City Council reject the bids for bid number 24-27, Terminal Security Improvements at the Colleen Regional Airport. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. You answered that we're going to reject it.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Any other questions? Thank you. Yes, sir. Mr. Wilson, we have another question. I truly apologize. Councilmember?
Mr. Wilson, how you doing, sir? Happy New Year. How long does it usually take to get new set of bids for this?
Well, in this particular project, or in this particular circumstance, we were in the process of bidding a terminal improvement project. And so in consultation with the FAA, what was decided to do was that we basically put the terminal improvement project on hold, repackage the security bids into the terminal package. And that will allow us to be able to meet the Buy American requirements. And so that is in process now. We think we'll be going to bid probably in the first week in February, open in March, and hope to have a contract before the council, late March, early February. That will combine both projects.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Secretary?
RS 25005, consider a memorandum resolution approving a professional services agreement with Viking Industrial Painting to provide engineering renovation and ongoing annual maintenance on the City of Colleen's 10 water storage tanks in the approximate amount of $3,800,000 over five years.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Happy New Year, Mr. Reynolds.
Likewise, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, counsel. We're here tonight. I have with me Mrs. John Snoggrass. He's one of the co-owners. He'll be assisting with the presentation tonight. We also have the engineer for the company, Mr. Kirk Irving. And we have the project manager/sales rep, Mr. Jason Decker, who is from the company. Viking Industrial Painting, in conjunction with affiliate company, VIP Engineering, is a licensed professional company in the state of Texas that provides professional service asset management of water storage tanks across the United States and has over 300 water tanks under their care. Out of that 300, we have approximately 82 of those within the state of Texas. We have 82 cities within the state of Texas that are using their services right now. Viking's core business focus is on municipal water storage tank renovation and ongoing maintenance. When we initially went out, we was looking to do a upgrade of the aesthetics of the water tanks. Was looking to see, make our water tanks look better across the City of Colleen. As Viking came down, Mr. Decker came down and did a... He went in every tank. He took videos, photos, and everything of every tank. They went above and beyond for us on that. And when he came back and breathed us, he also breathed us on an ongoing maintenance program. As you know, we recently built a water tank out on Chaparral. It was about $5.2 million. And we want to extend the life of these water tanks as long as possible. And they can be extended for years and years to come with this type of maintenance. Our staff is not equipped to do this level of maintenance, but this level of maintenance is necessary. And as we all know, water is our most important resource that we provide as a municipality. So I thought it was important to go into this type of agreement. With that being said, I want to have Mr. Snoggrass come up here and give us the rundown of what they're going to be providing for us, to us, and give you a couple of snapshots of some jobs they've done in the past.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Welcome, sir.
Welcome. Good afternoon, mayor, counsel. Happy New Year. Number one, it's a great honor to be able to sit here and talk to you all about your water storage tanks and talk to you a little bit about our company and about the solution that we would like to propose. Viking Industrial Paintings is a company started back in 2001. So we're going on our 24th year being in business. We primarily focus taking care of water tanks. And really, our main focus is exactly what we're talking about today, is asset management. So we have done a lot of projects all the way around Texas. We've done them all over the country. And so our company is... takes care of, as Mr. Reynolds had said, about 300 tanks under this maintenance contract. And so the contract is this, and it's really a pretty simple thing. You pay an annual fee. And for that annual fee, we assume complete responsibility of all the future maintenance of these water tanks. So it includes all future painting, all cleaning, all inspections, all future engineering. Really, what we're doing is that we're taking all of the things that need to happen to be able to proactively take care of these tanks and putting it under one umbrella. And then you pay that fee, and then it's our responsibility from that point forward. So the first thing that we had to do is that we had to do an assessment. And so Mr. Decker did that assessment of each one of your tanks and has identified what work we need to do to make sure that we have all the tanks taken care of the way that they should be. What we found through looking at each one of your tanks is that every one of your tanks was in the normal scope of the service life of a coating system. So we didn't see anything too out of line. But what we did find is that each one of the tanks are at various levels of service life of the coating systems. So what we want to do and what we're proposing to do for the city is put a system in place so that we can proactively take care of these tanks before they start to get into disrepair, aesthetically or don't look very well, and just make sure that we're taking care of these tanks as best that they need to be taken care of. So we've assessed all these things. And what we do is that we look at all the safety, the sanitary, the structural, the security, and the coating conditions of the tank. So the benefits of the program is, number one, is that you have a perpetual warranty on the tank. So we're going to come up, and we're going to renovate each one of these tanks whenever they need to get renovated. After we do the renovation and the repairs on the tank, it is our responsibility from that point forward to make sure that we take care of the tanks in such a way that it is, that they are proactively taken care of. So, you have a perpetual warranty. If the coating systems fail in years five, six, seven, we come back, we paint the tanks again, and there's no cost to the city of Colleen. It's all our responsibility. So you have a perpetual warranty for the full service life of the coating systems. Number two, we make sure that we keep you in compliance with TCEQ. So every year, we're going to inspect each one of the tanks. And if there are any recommendations, we will submit the report to TCEQ. And if there are any recommendations that come back where they come in and tell you that you need to do this or do that, then we come and take care of that. That is all part of the program. And ultimately, the biggest thing is that we're also not only making sure that we take care of the tanks that need the work today, we're also putting a system in place so that, again, all future maintenance will be included, as I've already talked a little bit about. One of the big benefits of this program is the financial planning. Is that ultimately, what we're doing is that we're going to give you a cost of exactly what it's going to cost. And you're shifting from that more of a capital expenditure to more of an operational type of an expense. But it's giving you a number that you can put into the budget, and you know exactly what it's going to cost you to take care of those assets from this point forward. Very important, and one of the things that I haven't addressed up to this point, is what are the value of the assets that you have? So if you look at the tanks, when we did the initial assessment, you have over $30 million worth of assets that are, that we're looking at trying to put a protective asset management program on. So when you start to kind of think about these type of things, I mean, obviously, it is one of the more expensive assets that the city owns. So, so we want to make sure that we're proactive, proactive in the way that we take care of it. And then the last thing that we talked about is just the improved aesthetics. We want to make sure that the tanks are always looking good, both inside and outside. Easy to talk about the outside because everybody can see the outside, but it's very important that we're doing regular assessments and making sure that we're recoding the interiors regularly because that is the part that's touching our drinking water. The next slide here just more or less kind of talks about the cost. And the main thing I want to show you in this slide right here is that what we have done is that we've assessed each one of the tanks. We've identified the work that needs to happen to make sure that we're in compliance with TCEQ, to make sure that we're in compliance with OSHA, and making sure that we're following all of AWWA's recommendations. We've spread that cost over the first five years of the program. And then in year six, you see that it drops dramatically, and that is down what we would consider a base fee. What the base fee takes care of is all the future maintenance. So all the future paint jobs, inspections, repairs, engineering, all the different things that we would have to do would all be taken care of for that, what that base fee is. Now, I'll go through these fairly quickly, but these are just some of the past projects that we've done. Just kind of showing you some before and after pictures. Obviously, as, as we renovate the tanks, they look way better after you're done. But we've, we do assessments of each one of these things. This is one we did in Arkansas. This is one we did here in the, in the state of Texas in Wilmer, where we had to, had to more or less go back. And this was a terrible site, but we got it all nice and taken care of. This is one we did out in Colorado. New Mexico. And then this is what the tanks will look like once we start to do the renovation with the logos that we've put on here in the city of Colleen. So...
With that being said, we have two alternatives here tonight. We can continue our current approach, which is deferment maintenance, which is going to cost us more down the road. And all we can enter into this tank maintenance program with Viking Industrial for 3.8 over the next five years. And our recommendation is that we authorize the city manager or doesn't need to execute a professional service water storage tank asset management agreement with Viking Industrial Painting for all water storage tanks and authorize the city manager or doesn't need to execute any and all change orders allowed by state and local law. And we're here to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. That is the most thorough presentation by a guest that we have ever had since I've been on the council. Sir, thank you. I mean, I don't really have any questions for you, but I do have it for Mr. Reynolds because I know what might be said and coming soon. First of all, who was taking care of our tanks prior? And while they're doing the maintenance on the tanks, how would that affect our water? When me and Mr. Kegel was going over this and just really seeing what you were going to present, that was one of the questions that someone had already proposed. So could you please answer in detail so everyone can understand what is about to happen?
Yes, ma'am. We have a phenomenal staff that go above and beyond in every division that we have in public works and across the city. Water and Sewer is second to none when it comes to their, their staff has been doing work that's well above their pay grade and what they're getting paid to do. And it's just, you get to a point where something like this, we can't do coating. We can't do certain things. And we do have annual inspections that we've been maintaining with TCQ, and our staff has done a phenomenal job of maintaining that. But we're at a point now where we don't want to let our assets that we have get to a state where we have to go ahead and replace those, any of those assets. And so to have a professional company that specializes in what they do, have them come in and take that piece over, that level of maintenance that's above operating level maintenance, and take that piece off of our operators so they can focus on other maintenance that we have to take care of, water main breaks, meter replacement, and things of that nature, is going to be a big help to the staff. And I think it's going to benefit us down the road because as he stated before, it shifts that responsibility from us to them in their partnership. Yes, ma'am.
And the water in the tank while they're doing the maintenance on it?
Yes, ma'am. We will be able to, like I said, the staff is phenomenal. We can shut tanks down. We can shut a tank down, let them do the maintenance, redirect from other locations, and provide water throughout the city. We have no, no, no issue doing that.
Thank that, thank you for that, Mr. Reynolds. The council may know that, but it's important that the public know that.
Absolutely.
Mr. Kegel, it seemed like you wanted to add to that.
No, but Mr. Reynolds answered it.
Thank you, thank you. I had already proposed that I want to make sure that the residents knew that while they're preparing it, the water won't be tainted in any manner.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilmember Board.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds, and thank you for that presentation. That was an excellent presentation. For those in business, you get all the major points, so appreciate that. I do appreciate the proactive approach that we're taking. You mentioned $30 million in assets that we have just through our water storage tanks. So I do appreciate this comprehensive approach to getting this taken care of. Visibility, this is significant because we have several water towers across the city, and you see them. And by default, they're just kind of in the background most places that you go. So to have these painted and fresh with the new logo, looking forward to it. I know that's something that's important to me and has been for the council since we got on here. And so just having the branding, looking forward to it. Great presentation, great approach, looking forward to protecting our assets. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Sagala.
Thank you. Just real quick, budget. You know, where does the money come from to do this project?
We have the money in our current budget to cover this year and future years, sir. It's been, we, we, trust me, we discussed it with finance to make sure we was trying to...
Well, that's always the big thing, money. You know, where does that money come from?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And I like the part where it would not be a capital improvement item that we can budget for it every year, and that gives up some space to put another project on that list. That's excellent work. I mean, I commend you and your staff. Well done. Thank you, sir. Madam Secretary.
RS 25006. Consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the approval of change order number two for the Gilmer Street Road and Pedestrian Improvements Project in the amount of $905,195.23.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, Council. Mr. Zager have the next two items. Happy New Year, Mr. Zager.
Happy New Year, Mayor, fellow council members. So we're here for the change order number two for Gilmer Street. As you know, it's a project that's under construction. The project was included in the 2022 Capital Improvement Plan. On November 7th, 2023 is when the council awarded the construction of TTG Utilities at the amount of $4,404,000. During the construction, you know, we started on the south end of the railroad tracks. We moved to the north. As we started opening the road up, trying to dig down for the road, we were encountering a lot of utilities. We're encountering a lot of water and sewer services. The change order number one took care of a lot of those when we had to do some water relocates. In addition, we found a four-inch main that we had no idea about. It wasn't on any of our records. We didn't know where it was. And as we started finding out, a lot of those utilities, those water and sewer services were tied to this four-inch main. And it's at an elevation that is in conflict with the road as we're trying to build it. So we're using this change order in order to replace it with a six-inch. That is actually our minimum standard for any new water main that we put in the city. And then we'll be able to reconnect all the services and then get rid, get rid of the old line and have a brand-new line while we have the road ripped up and do it now. We worked with our design consultant, did a change order for their design to help look at a design, look at coming, bring the plans for our contractor to get a, establish a price to do this work. Again, this change order will replace that four-inch with a new six-inch main. It'll add some isolation valves in the intersections. So if we ever have some issues, we'll be able to isolate them. The main without having, like as of right now, we have a lot of old mains. As we hit something, I think everyone's kind of noticed, we've been having to shut down a lot of water, including City Hall, every time something happens. So we're trying to fix that while we can. And again, while we have the road under construction. The proposed change order is for $905,195.23. And we do have funding in the current budget for this project through our Water and Sewer Fund. So we're not going to be using the street fee money for this. It will be our Water and Sewer. The location of the water main is pretty much from Battalion Valley Avenue all the way up to Ransier. That's the, the blue line. And in addition, we have a small little sewer repair up at the north end off of Fergus, where we have a couple of brick, brick manholes that need to be replaced. And there was a section of the sewer line that was in conflict with the road that got damaged. So we're using this to fix that as well. Here's a couple of pictures kind of showing where we're doing some repairs where we've had to do up to this point. You can kind of see that little line up a little higher in the trench. That is that four-inch main. And there's also a picture of the, you know, the brick manhole that's out there for the sewer that we have to take care of. Our staff recommends the city council authorize the execution of change order number two for, with TTG Utilities in the amount of $905,195.23.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, I'm here.
Mr. Zagers, I have a concern. Am I concerned because this is a change order? How's this going to affect the businesses that are over there?
So we're going to be doing the repair as we do the project. So right now, the main is actually on the other side of the road. So when we're going to finish the half of the road that we've got now, they're putting the lime treatment out there now. I think they want to do a little bit more this week so we can finish the road. We'll be able to shift traffic over to the other side, keep it a one-way like we're doing. We still keep access to all the, all the businesses, all the residents. We make sure that that is maintained all the way through construction. That's one reason why it's taking a little longer because we do have to work around all those things. And then while we open up the other half of the road, we'll be able to take care of the water main at that same time.
So as you're working or have been working, it hasn't affected the business?
We've maintained that there's been access. So all the businesses have had access out there at all times. We've made sure the road has stayed open. It is a one-way road. It's not too late anymore, but it is one-way. But we make sure that that is being maintained at all times. And if, if any of the businesses have any questions or any residents, our contractors out there, my project manager is out there. We try to see if there's a solution we can do while we're out there at the same time. And if there's anything else we can do to kind of help out, we'll do what we can.
Thank you. Councilmember Board.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one question. How much longer might the change order extend the construction timeline?
So right now, we're looking about the end of August with the water main to get everything complete. It's a lot easier when you're ripping road up because we're already ripping it up, the mains right there. So it doesn't really add that much more time.
Thank you.
Mayor Proctor.
Thank you. So we know that there's always something that could happen when you go into a road, especially with the age of these roads, and we've got some things in place to start working on those. So I just really wanted to tell you thank you to your team for getting upfront of some of the construction issues and challenges that we're having, being very transparent and also working with the constituents in that surrounding area. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Secretary.
RS 25007. Consider a memorandum resolution authorizing a professional service agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates Incorporated for the design of Featherline Road Reconstruction Project in the amount of $1,833,873.
Thank you so much, Mr. Zager. I am so excited to hear about this.
Yep, this, this topic has been kind of more recent and has kind of been the front line of everyone for a while, all since September. So here we are with the design consultant contract for the design of Featherline Road. During the September 17th meeting is when the city council were talking about the future bond and the capital projects. And the project for Featherline was selected. The project at that, you know, was selected to be moved as part of this future bond. And as discussed, and I think in other meetings, we decided to move forward with the design using the funds we have and then eventually reimbursing ourselves when the bond sells. So we're moving forward with the design. The project is going to be including widening Featherline, Featherline Road to three lanes, including sidewalks, street trees on both sides, stormwater drainage improvements. There's a culvert crossing kind of by, right up there at Yell Ranch that we're going to be looking at, seeing if we have to improve that. There's also going to include a 12-inch water main, which was part of our water CIP projects that are actually on our future master plan. That'll be coming up within a month. So we're going to incorporate that as well with this project. And also, we're looking at an intersection improvement at Featherline and Malmasan, whether it's going to be a traffic signal or roundabout. We're going to be looking at that during the design. Kim Lee Horn was selected. They've done really good work for us. They did Bunny Trail. And so, and they're also the ones I think we can get the job done a lot quicker than some of the others. So we went to them, got a proposal for $1,833,873. Again, the limits of the project is the full length of Featherline from Chaparral all the way up to Stagecoach. And then our recommendation, the city council approved the, authorized the city manager to enter an agreement with Kim Lee Horn Associates and design for Featherline Road Reconstruction in the amount of $1,833,873.
Thank you so much. And, you know, council, I think a couple of years ago, I guess I was a city council member when we did the street maintenance fee. And to really see all the infrastructure, infrastructure, construction that's going throughout the city and that the staff know that there's a need on Featherline. And I have to give my kudos to Councilwoman Cobb and Councilmember Sagala, I mean, Solomon, for having that town hall meeting that surrounded Featherline that we're at this point. And then that's the uniqueness about the comprehensive plan. It's a working document. And some things, things do shift to meet the needs of the residents. But thank you, thank you so much for your hard work and your team. Thank you, and thank you, Council. Thank you. Madam Secretary. Oh, Councilmember Board, sir, Councilmember Board.
Sorry. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just think it's appropriate...
Okay, Councilman Solomon, I'll get you next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just think it's appropriate to highlight that this is another fine example of the council prioritizing this project. There are two other road construction projects that are associated with the CO bond, and this one has been determined to go into the design process first. Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out. That's very important to note. Councilman Solomon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too want to thank you for your hard work and what you're doing here. I'm, I'm really excited about this. But let me ask you, this, I want to make clear that this is a design phase. And how long will it take?
We're looking about two years for the design. We're going to have an open house like we did before with Bunny Trail and Watercrest. We've got some issues with Corps of Engineers and some other agencies that we're going to have to do some studies and permitting through. And we could get it done in two years, because at least that's what the current schedule is.
Okay. Okay, thank you, sir.
Well, we took the first step. And we know we have to work with other entities, but this council took the first step. And thank you, and Councilwoman Cobb, Councilman Solomon. Thank you, sir. Madam Secretary.
RS 25008. Consider a memorandum resolution approving a request submitted by Jane W. Jancheck on behalf of Bunny Trail Estate LP authorizing the city to utilize its condemnation authority in accordance with Colleen Code of Ordinances, Section 2693, for a .032 acre tract of land located east of the landing at Clear Creek, Phase 4, at the terminus of Mohawk Drive.
Thank you. Council Mrs. Messner, she has four items on the agenda. Happy New Year, ma'am.
Happy New Year. Thank you, and, and good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is a memorandum of resolution. Oops. Why it's doing that? Requesting that the council authorize their use of condemnation authority for a small piece of property located at the end of Mohawk. On April 11th, 2023, the council approved a petition for voluntary annexation submitted by Bunny Trail LP for 221 acres located west of Bunny Trail. And at the same meeting, the council also approved a request to rezone the property for a planned unit development. There is a narrow strip of land located on the west side of the approved PUD boundary, which is a remainder from the landing at Clear Creek subdivision and is still owned by WBW Development. The strip of land measures approximately 14 feet wide and approximately 726 feet long. Because it is not owned by the developer of the PUD, this strip of land was not included in the petition for voluntary annexation and is therefore still outside the corporate city limits. The red star on your screen indicates the location of the proposed condemnation. And this aerial map indicates the, the area in question as well. So you can see there's a small, a narrow strip of property that is outside the city limit boundary. And then the red area on your screen is the area of the proposed condemnation. This is a similar map just showing the, the thoroughfare for Mohawk Drive connecting through the PUD property itself. The proposed development by Bunny Trail contemplates extending Mohawk through, through the development in accordance with our thoroughfare plan. And this narrow strip of land separates the current terminus of Bunny, of Bunny, Bunny Trail, I should say Mohawk, separates the current terminus of Mohawk from the property owned by Bunny Trail and therefore precludes access from the west side. So in order to connect Mohawk, the 14-foot by 100-foot strip of right-of-way separating, separating the property from the current terminus must be included within the platted boundary by the developer. And that, that strip of right-of-way amounts to 1,404 square feet. This is an exhibit showing the area of the proposed condemnation. According to a third-party appraisal conducted by National Appraisal Partners, the fair market value of this piece of property is $1,264. In February of 2024, Bunny Trail LP offered to purchase the property from WBW for $20,000, and the offer was not accepted. On September 11th, 2024, Jane Jancheck on behalf of Bunny Trail LP did submit a request for use of condemnation authority in accordance with Section 2693, which outlines essentially the condemnation process and the requirements associated with that submittal. The section does say that streets must be located in rights-of-way secured and paid for by the applicant. And such easements must be properly assigned to the city before services extended. In casements where these easements cannot be secured by the applicant, the applicant may file a written petition prior to submittal of the final plat, requesting that the city utilize its condemnation authority. And that petition must satisfy the criteria on the screen. First, that the applicant must establish clear evidence of a public need. The applicant must establish that the proposed extension is in accordance with adopted plans, in this case with the thoroughfare plan. They must establish that the proposed extension will be able to serve other development areas and must agree to pay all costs of the condemnation. And finally, that the petition must satisfy several criteria. First, that they must present written evidence that every practical attempt to secure the needed easement or right-of-way has been made by submitting a condemnation appraisal, documentation of a written offer. And all of that must be forwarded to the department for review. And the decision, and then the decision is made by the city council. So staff does find that the applicant has met all of these criteria. And is, staff is therefore recommending that the council approve the memorandum of resolution approving the use of condemnation authority. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Kegel. We had a discussion about how complicated this is. The city don't want to come across as a bully. And I, I need it to be broken down into lay, laying terms that the residents can understand why this property, this area is important for the city of Colleen.
Yes, ma'am. And just to remind you, this is a small strip of land that's only used for road construction, not anything else. And this strip is preventing us from connecting Mohawk on the west and bringing it to the east of Bunny Trail. We can't build the road without, we can't connect the road without this strip of land.
Correct. Mrs. Messner, do you want to add anything else to that?
That sums it up.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. When we were going over it, it was just like, oh, my goodness. Mr. Kegel, what were we doing here? Mr. Kegel, what were we doing? We explained. But it's important that our residents know why we do what we do.
In order for Mohawk to connect all the way through, this 14-foot piece of property is necessary.
Yes, ma'am. And Councilmember Alvarez is going to share his expertise.
Thank you, Ms. Messer, for that presentation. I just wanted to clarify in more lay terms, if I can, that basically the Bunny Trail LP, the developer for this PUD, is going to bring or construct the extension of Mohawk Trail, where it currently ends at the landing at Clear Creek subdivision off of Clear Creek Road, bring it to the east to Bunny Trail at their expense. But they need this 14-foot strip that still belongs to a different developer. They offered them more than what the fair market value was. According to the presentation, I think it was $20,000 for a land, piece of land valued at $1,400 or something like that. $1,264. That offer was not accepted, so we moved forward to the request for condemnation. So I just want to make sure that we have all that clear and that this is, I believe, a benefit to the city and the residents who live in that area that need that extension of Mohawk onto Bunny Trail. Does that sound about right?
That's right. Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarez. That was my next question. How does it benefit the residents in that area? Thank you for that. That was great. Thank you. Madam Secretary?
OR 25001, consider an ordinance amending the North Colleen revitalization program to alleviate off-street parking requirements within the North Colleen revitalization area.
Thank you. Mrs. Messer, stand by. Councilman Alvarez, do you have any more questions? Okay. Yes, ma'am. Please.
Thank you. This ordinance is a proposed amendment to the North Colleen Revitalization Program ordinance. The program was adopted or established in 2015 and re-adopted in 2020 and later amended in 2023. As you likely know, the program waives certain fees for eligible projects within the North Colleen Revitalization Boundary. The purpose of the program is to incentivize new development in North Colleen. If approved, the proposed ordinance will alleviate the minimum off-street parking requirements within the North Colleen Revitalization Area with the goal of facilitating new infill development. This map shows the boundaries of the North Colleen Revitalization Area. So you can see it extends down to Hallmark Avenue and Terrace Drive to the south and to WS Young on the east. For a property owner or developer to be eligible to apply for the fee waivers, they must not be delinquent in paying property taxes, must not have any active code enforcement violations, they must not be in arrears on any city account or have any city liens. And the North Colleen Revitalization Program waives fees for new construction or rehabilitation projects that expend a maximum of $2,000. Those fees include the building permit fees, plan review inspection fees, plat application fees, variance fees, demolition, zoning application, signed permit, traffic impact analysis worksheet fees, and parkland dedication and development fees. If approved, this amendment will allow the off-street parking requirements as prescribed in Chapter 31 to be reduced or eliminated by the Executive Director of Development Services if it is deemed that doing so will advance the city's revitalization efforts. With that, staff is recommending approval of the ordinance as presented. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Messer. I don't see any questions at this time. So, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Secretary?
PH 25001, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Datah Bahaider Casey on behalf of Bum Inn and N Jong Lee, case number Z 2432, to rezone approximately .459 acres out of the A Dixon survey, abstract number 2667101021, from B3 Local Business District to B4 Business District. The subject property is locally addressed as 3,000 Lake Road, Colleen, Texas.
Thank you, Ms. Messer.
All right. This item is a request to rezone roughly half an acre from B3 to B4. If approved, the applicant's intent is to utilize one of the suites within an existing shopping center for use as a liquor store. The red star on your screen indicates the location of the property. This is an aerial of the site. As you can see, there is an existing commercial shopping center on the property. This is a view of the property facing south, the adjacent property to the north, to the east, to the west. Property is located within the neighborhood infill sector on the growth sector map. Sector includes areas that are already developed but have access to city services and infrastructure but have vacant or underutilized or poorly developed properties. Growth policies for this sector encourage development and redevelopment. Subject property is designated residential commercial, regional commercial on the future land use map. This place type encourages a use mix of up to 100% non-residential and up to 50% residential. The request furthers the comprehensive plan recommendations on the screen, including use place in complete neighborhoods as building blocks, improving the fiscal productivity of development, encouraging incremental evolution of neighborhoods and building complete neighborhoods. There are no proposed parks or trails. Parkland dedication fees will not, or fees in lieu will not be required as the property is already developed. And we notified 35 surrounding property owners regarding this request. Of those property owners notified, 18 reside outside the 200-foot boundary, but within the 400-foot boundary, and 18, and two live outside of Colleen. To date, we have received one written response, not position of the request from the owner of the property at 3,001 Lake Road. The opposition letter noted concerns regarding traffic as well as the location of the proposed business across the street from an existing fourplex that has young residents. So this is the notification boundary. The opposition was received from the property directly to the north where the yellow star is shown on your screen. Surrounding area includes a mix of residential and commercial uses. And staff is of the determination that the applicant's request is consistent with the prevailing community character. And staff finds that the request is also consistent with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan. We are therefore recommending approval of the request to rezone the property to B4. The Planning and Zoning Commission at their regular meeting on November 18th recommended approval of the request unanimously by a vote of six to zero. Happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions on this item? Thank you. Seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Messer. Madam Secretary?
PH 25002, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Jim Wright Company on behalf of Kudra Rentals Limited, case number Z 2433, to rezone Lot 1, Block 1, North 10th Edition, from B2 Local Retail District to B3 Local Business District. The subject property is locally addressed as 1005 North 10th Street, Colleen, Texas.
Counsel, this is a request to rezone the property at 1005 North 10th Street from B2 to B3. If approved, the applicant's intent is to utilize the property as a mortuary or funeral chapel, excluding cremation services, as allowed by Chapter 31 of the Code of Ordinances. The red star on your screen indicates the location of this property. This is an aerial. As you can see, it's a request to rezone one existing lot that has an existing commercial building on it. This is a view of that commercial building. This is a view of the adjacent property to the north, to the south, and to the east. Property is located within the infill and enhanced sector on the growth sector map, which includes areas with existing development and access to city services and infrastructure, but where additional population, higher development intensities, and integration of uses is desired. The sector includes primarily North Colleen, and growth policies should support infill redevelopment and infrastructure projects. Request supports or furthers several of the comprehensive plan recommendations, including use place types and complete neighborhoods as building blocks, improving the fiscal productivity of development, encouraging incremental evolutions of neighborhoods, and building complete neighborhoods. Staff notified 44 surrounding property owners, and to date, we have received one written response in support of this request. The respondent is the owner of the subject property as well as the properties to the west, south, and southwest. Staff has received no written responses in opposition. This is the notification boundary. The property includes a vacant commercial building, which is currently zoned B2, and the surrounding area includes predominantly commercial and multifamily uses. Therefore, staff is of the determination that the applicant's request is consistent with the prevailing community character and consistent with the comprehensive plan, and we are therefore recommending approval of the applicant's request to rezone the property to B3. Planning and Zoning Commission on November 18th also recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Messer, for that presentation. We do have one from Councilmember Boyd. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Your presentation states to respond as the owner of the subject property as well as the project to the west, south, and southwest. What is the size of this lot? Less than a quarter acre, correct?
The lot in question, I don't know if we have the exact acreage in here. It's roughly a quarter acre.
Roughly a quarter.
It's pretty small.
Okay. Now, the proposed use is for actual chapel use or office use?
The proposed use is for a mortuary, which will not include actual funeral services. It is my understanding that the bodies of the deceased will actually be brought there and prepared for funerals, which will take place elsewhere. So if a loved one is having a funeral at a church, the preparation of the body will occur here, but the funeral services themselves will not.
Okay, I see. Okay.
And the code does require, so it's more than an office in that regard because there is the presence of the dead bodies in the facility, which per our code, a mortuary is essentially where bodies are held.
Sure.
Needs to be B3.
Okay. And it is a service, right? And I understand that. I'm not going to speak on how I feel about it. There are multifamily units just behind, to the north of this property, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's multifamily, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilman Solomon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With this, to add on to what Councilboard asked in terms of multifamilies, from the picture that I seen, if you can go back to the picture. Okay, so these are duplexes, correct? Behind them, duplexes, not?
When you say behind, you mean in the background of the picture?
In the background of this building.
That's right. That property is zoned R3.
This is the property right here. Right. And so there are, it's not homes, there are apartment complexes, sixplexes, right behind it.
So this, this building here is the property in question.
Okay.
It's currently zoned B2. The request is to rezone to B3. There is residential.
Directly behind it.
Over here and directly behind it, back here. This property in the foreground right here is zoned for commercial use as well.
And all of these residents receive notices?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
May I approach you?
So the question that we had was, was there any additional requirements, legal requirements for this zoning, for this type of business in this particular area, especially as it relates to EPA and?
There are no city requirements for a mortuary. I'm not aware of what state requirements there are for a mortuary.
Thank you.
And my question is in reference to the parking.
Again, there will not be funeral services held at this location. This is, this is purely where the body is prepared for a funeral service that will take place elsewhere.
I understand that. But the parking, will they be parking in the back where the white line is? Or is it somewhere in the front? Maybe I'm missing parking.
So this parcel is fairly small. The properties, the adjacent properties are all owned by the same applicant. So it's likely that there's, there's an opportunity for some shared parking there. But when we review the certificate of occupancy for the proposed uses, that's the point at which we check for
Okay.
making sure that they have all the parking that they're, that they're required to have based on our off-street parking.
I just don't want it to be inconvenient for the residents that live there.
Sure.
That's all. Any more questions? Thank you so much. Madam Secretary?
Madam Mayor, we are at citizen comments on agenda items.
Oh, we got there. Oh, I forgot. I ran out. Okay. All right, citizen comments. You have four minutes to, okay. Councilmember Adams would like to take a break. So we would take a five, which one of y'all would like to take a break? If we don't need one, we can keep pushing. You don't need a break? No, wait, oh, keep pushing. All right, we will go into citizen comments. You have four minutes to speak, counsel. You have three minutes, I mean, one minute to speak. All right. The first person is Cameron Cochran. You have four minutes.
First, I'd like to start out by expressing my appreciation to the men and women of the Colleen Police Department. Under the leadership of Chief Lopez, the police have investigated numerous drug and shooting occurrences around the Colleen area. In the latter part of 2024, shots were fired in the downtown area that was investigated, and lots of other criminals were apprehended, most recently. Thank you, KPD, for keeping our streets and cities safe. Next, I would like to bring to your attention the fact that the downtown revitalization is once again in the minds of the city council. We haven't even started a year. It looks like we're giving out free money again. OR 25001, Colleen's revitalization program. I have two observations on this subject. First observation, over the holidays, Christmas markets in Germany, Bourbon Street, New Orleans, all were sites of devastation when a vehicle was used to kill visitors attending local events. To prevent the same incident from occurring in the downtown area and to keep from becoming a memorial ground for graves, I would request that the city stop sponsoring large gathering events until more safety and protective measures are put in place. We have seen that these large-scale events can become potentially killing grounds for those who attend, and small-town communities are typically the target. During the State of the Union address back in February 2023, it was mentioned that foot traffic for the downtown area was estimated at 1.2 million visitors. Before the city can host another event such as Motown in downtown, nighttime markets, or even the Fourth of July event, I would encourage the city to stop promoting these events in their current format. Instead, use a portion of the $15 million, yes, $15 million that was put in the downtown area and put in some security protective measures. If the city leaders are serious about protecting the residents of Colleen, they will add barriers as well as other safety protective devices on the streets of downtown. This should be done immediately. The historic downtown has 14 access streets. At any given time when an event is being hosted, people are vulnerable to vehicular devastation. Things like barriers along the sidewalks besides wood and plastic barriers should be incorporated, things that are made of steel. Let me repeat, things that are made of steel and not plastic or wood. Before the city council can approve the current item that's on the agenda, let's talk about funding for those city-sponsored events in the downtown area. I encourage the city leadership to invest in the forest protection program. The truly, city truly cares about the 159,000 residents who live in Colleen. Stop hosting events unless you put in those protective security things. Second observation, under the heading of this agenda item, the Northern Colleen Revitalization Program, I've only witnessed that the city gives grants to small businesses in the downtown area. This includes facade improvement grant programs, the Colleen Sewer and redevelopment programs, and the exterior renovation grant programs. My question is, when will the residents of the Colleen hear about a revitalization program on Fort Hood Street, on Stan Sluter Street, or other places in the southern part of this community? I'd like to remind the city and the mayor that small businesses are occurring all around the city and not just in the downtown area. How about spending some of that taxpayer money on small businesses outside the area here in Colleen? In my opinion, it's important to share the wealth of funding throughout the city and not just a concentrated effort. Thank you. Thank you.
This Mohawk-Bunny Trail situation, let's be honest, everything that I have to say about this does relate to the agenda. So before the gavel comes down and a certain council member wants to yell "point of order", everything that I have to say relates to this. Another council member saying, "Oh, it's an expert, and this needs to be done." Well, if the planning on this project was done, the road projection, somebody should have said, "Hey, this road is going through somebody else's property." Doesn't matter. Right of condemnation, that's eminent domain, in spirit and in effect. I've seen this before, okay? My expertise, I lived two blocks north of the Pfizer Building and right across the river, looking out my front porch when I was stationed in the Navy, looking across the Thames River for the famous kilo decision, right? That whole deal was crap, and many states changed constitution on that, especially the state of Texas. Right of eminent domain? No, can't do that. The purpose, the people don't want it. Let's be honest. Mr. Boyd and friends, they don't need it. They want it so that that Mohawk Road extension can go feed the business and funnel and channel traffic to his business partners for that tract of land that he's got for sale.
Point of order.
It's not there that, if you say "point of order," you're implying I'm on the council.
This is not on the agenda, Madam Ora. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, is the truth too hard, Mayor? Once again?
Uh, Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No council member's profession is a part of the agenda, and so it should not be spoken of by any citizen.
You're directly benefiting from it.
Thank you.
You're not even supposed to be voting on it, and the fact that, oh, good man.
Mister Fornino, please stick to the agenda.
I am on the agenda. Why don't you get a clue?
Madam Secretary, would you please start the clock? Thank you, ma'am.
I'm sorry, facts are a little bit too much for you. It's been reported in the paper. I'm not letting some big old cat out of the bag. He's going to recuse himself from the boat. Big deal, I got a dollar cash that says he's already given the wink and the nod. You guys are all with me, right?
Madam Mayor.
You're going to vote for it.
Point of order.
I'm not on the council, so you can't say "point of order."
Madam Secretary, please stop the clock.
Am I an ad hoc member of the council law?
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
I can call our closed session, and we can go have it out man to man.
Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're going to be professional, and we're going to maintain order. And so thank you for taking this moment. Just to reiterate, what we do as professions, as council members, has nothing to do with what's on the agenda.
Oh, especially when you're making money off of it?
I'd like for us to sustain this conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Boyd.
We're not supposed to notice?
Uh, I, Mister Fornino, Madam Secretary, start the clock. Let him finish, please. You can speak out to him, please, let him finish.
We're not supposed to notice that he's going to be profiting off of this and his partners? That's off, that's hands-off? This is crap. Sending out a cigar with the comedy club, now him with this deal?
Mister Fornino, that's not on the agenda.
Well, you don't. It is on the agenda. I'd like to see how this plays out because the person you're trying to take the land from is one of your biggest donors, Mayor. Was that a cat out of the bag?
That is not true, and that's not on the agenda.
I'm giving the invitation for the, I'm thinking about running for mayor.
Stay on the agenda, Mister Fornino.
His name was all over it. You're afraid of the facts. You're all steaming piles of bovine excrement when it comes to this. When somebody's got the facts, you don't like it because it's uncomfortable, because we see the dirty dealings, and it's inconvenient.
Just let him finish, please.
And you don't have the spine to debate me face-to-face. You won't take a phone call, an email, you're a spineless little worm.
Mister Fornino, get back on the agenda.
It is the agenda. He's going to be cleaning up on this deal, and we're not supposed to notice? It's ridiculous. Most of you are making money off of this city, and then when it comes to something over budget like on Gilmer Street, we got to pay for it. Why should you care? It's not your money. We get hit with the fees. Get off our backs and start representing, like with Gilmer Street. The representative who council won barely addresses it. Like, she's not the only one. We've got one, two, three at-large council members that could be working toward a solution to not affect the businesses. Who are you representing, other than the people that are lining your pockets? You want to debate me? I dare you. You can't. You won't. What are you going to do? Get in my face, call a cop, say, "He's being mean to me. He's telling the truth. We can't have it out there." You're spineless. How about you represent or be able to on an equal footing without hiding behind the dash, the gavel, or a cop? Have a sit-down conversation. You can't do that.
Your time is up. Counsel. I respect each and every one of you. You all knew this was going to happen coming into the 2025, and I'm hoping that we can carry ourselves in a professional manner. Now, I can say stay on the agenda, stay on the agenda, and you know they're not going to stay on the agenda because they want to pull you out of character. We are bigger than that. First warning. Thank you for getting that, Mister Kevin. Let me hold it back up. Thank you. So we have to be the bigger person. The people elected you. This is going to go on all year. So let's just let them say what they got to say unless they're totally off the agenda. There's no need of us going backwards and forward with them. It's a waste of time. Councilmember Boyd, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And choose my words carefully. I know it's a new year, and newspapers looking to write a story. I had no idea I'd come into this meeting and be highlighted off of false accusations that have not been proven to this day. Thank you very much. Also grateful that I have the capacity to remain professional despite this. I look forward to serving this year, and that's all I got. Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Constituent did raise some valid questions, so I just want to bring it back to focus regarding safety and security as it relates to events. I do think it's important that we highlight very briefly that...
I was going to call up Chief Lopez.
Thank you.
Because I believe in facts.
Yes, ma'am. I would appreciate that. I would appreciate that, but I just, go ahead.
If you don't mind, Council, I can't tell you what to do.
I'll yield my time.
The people voted you. Can we just let them, people that want to do citizen comment, let them speak, and then if you have anything to say to make corrections, we will do that after. We cannot start 2025 off with the same behavior as 2024. We are future-focused. With that being said, Mister Sean Price, you have four minutes.
Again, RS 25002, I'm just, just a question for the chief. Who's going to be doing the transparency on this, and how is it going to be ensured that the use of this program, right, this big brother, big brother program with the cameras, is not abused, like it's done with the FBI and the CIA and all that other stuff, right? So I just want to make sure who's in charge and who's overseeing it and who's supervising it, and who and how will they be accountable and accounted for when they actually do abuse it? Because this is a system that's highly abused across the nation anyway.
RS 2505, I was just wondering if there, if the coatings that are used in the tanks, if they promote plastic fibers, micro, or MPFs, right, in the water system, or micro, what is it, microscopic plastic fibers in our water, right? Because we do have them in our water right now. Eighty-five percent of our drinking water has them. So I'm just wondering if this promotes it, inhibits it, and is, or these coatings anywhere Under 25007, at Yow Ranch, when it was first developed, right, how much would the road have cost at the time when they made and developed Yow Ranch and put the new police headquarters out there if they had actually built the road at that point in time compared to what it's costing now? Or if that has ever even been done? Because I don't think that any of the roads, those processes have even been taken place, what the cost was then to compare now, because it's been ten years. Okay, and to take this property, this, even this fourteen-foot, seven-hundred-whatever-feet-long, to take this property, to take any property from another person is theft, right? Even if you have good intentions. I didn't good intentions, right? I want to, I want to take your car. I have a good intention, so I want to take your car, because you've got a brand-new truck. You've got a brand-new sports car. Let me have it, because I need it, because I, you know. So this is the way I'm looking at it. It's very communistic to do this maneuver. So if the guy doesn't want to sell his property, he doesn't want to sell it. So what's the point? Who failed the competency test here to plan appropriately for this road system? Who's to blame for not planning appropriately? That's who you need to go after, because they failed. The competency there is at zero. Off-street parking, right? I'm just going to echo the security that's in downtown for events again, right? That is a valid, after what's been going on, it's been valid. So I don't know if we have any archers. I don't know if we have, you know, most of the time we're using concrete planters, right, with earth inside, but, and I don't know what that's going to do to our budget, since we're already over $185 million, right? And over $92 million or $90 million in debt. So those are my questions. Thank you for your time.
is being a professional or showing anybody a new change. Also, before we continue to say that because it comes from the podium doesn't make it true, remember where your staff presents from. Okay. Now, is there really enough opposition to infill development in North Colleen just because there has to be driveways and parking lots big enough for the purpose of the building? Because that's what we're talking about, is getting rid of the requirement for off-street parking, driveways and parking lots that fit the needs of whatever is being built there. This will further congest narrow roads, make it more difficult to see pedestrians crossing the street, and could be, likely be in areas that lack sidewalks and streetlights. This does not enhance public safety. Let's talk a little bit about being proactive. Being proactive would mean the city council wouldn't be trying to give proxy eminent domain to a developer who wasn't properly prepared. But I'm glad this came up, because the city shouldn't be forcing a property owner to turn over their land just so a development can go in. Throughout the entire petition, the requestor states the road connection is necessary for development of this PUD, for development of the housing, for development of the commercial, for connectivity to housing and commercial. Pages seven through nine of eighteen of the Bunny Trail PUD standards voted on and approved in April 11th of 2023 calls for the installation of a minor arterial, not stated the city would build it, that connects Mohawk down to a commercial area on Bunny Trail. Belt and engineering should have been required to submit a survey proving they could meet their obligation. Clearly, that didn't happen before it came to the city council planning and zoning or anybody else. The applicant, city, and council apparently overlooked a crucial part of the project. And I don't really care what the land is designed for. Can we even exercise eminent domain in this case? Because it looks like the majority of this small little parcel is outside of our city limits right now. Why are we using a bond for the Mohawk extension if the developer was supposed to pay for it at their cost? But again, are you really willing to force the property owner to turn over their land just so the developer can move forward with plans that should have been completed properly from the beginning? I've heard some of you refer to yourselves as experts in this area, looking at plans, knowing how they work, looking at plotting, looking at surveys. Y'all missed it. Experts, right? There is a legal process for eminent domain, and putting it on a consent agenda isn't that process. The ordinance says that the council's decision is final, and that is never the case. If you go through with this, I hope that the property owner, the current owner of it, goes ahead and sees the city, because you know what? We don't need a precedent set, that just because the city wants a road, that it'll connect to some warehouses, some more subdevelopments, some more commercial lands, that there is a financial stake for people on this council for, that they'll go ahead and force the turnover of that land. My property, my money, my choice, I shouldn't be forced to give my property over. Thanks. When it comes to crime prevention grants, anytime we can get a grant to improve public safety, it should be supported. But my question is, will these cameras be used to scan for individuals with municipal misdemeanor or felony warrants, or will the plate readers only be used for vehicle theft cases? A response to the benefit about the lease agreement, it's that the obvious answer is it will bring in an additional revenue stream for the airport and reduce reliance on passenger facility charges. And then a $4 million payment to be proactive is the best idea I have heard in a long time regarding infrastructure in this city. Being proactive could have saved us almost $1 million in doubling the length of work on Gilmer, which the... I'd like to request one moment, please. No, Ms. Gonzalez, say yes. I didn't hear Mr. Adams' answer.
Alex said no. Anybody else? No, yes. Okay, yes, no.
What was Mr. Alvarez's answer?
Thank you. Women, let her sit down. Your time is up now.
Okay, we're not going to put everybody on the record, so we're starting off the same way we ended.
Alex said no. He can speak up now. He said no. Boyd said no. Cigar said no, and Solomon said no. Now, they got a chance to say they didn't say it. Okay, please take your seat.
And what did Alvarez say?
Your time is up.
Okay, we're not going to sound...
Mister Cagle.
Well, it's difficult to know where to start on all that, but it's not about lack of planning or incompetence. It was known from the very beginning that this strip of land would be needed, and it was, many attempts were made to purchase, and you saw the purchase price. To take the other side of the argument, a person that owns this small strip of land can hold the landowner hostage, hold the city hostage from connecting roads. Ms. Brown's well aware we're not issuing debt to build that part of Mohawk Road. She was sitting, she was sitting in the audience and saw the plan, so either she's blind or she's just intentionally misstating the truth. So we are not issuing debt for that part of Mohawk Road, plain and simple.
The next person, Travis Parks. So you have four minutes, and I apologize for everything you had to say. Sorry about that. To all our guests, I truly apologize.
Madam Protem, Mister Cagle, counsel, thank you for the opportunity to be here. It is my first time to see this in person. I've seen some replays online, and hopefully I'll be one fewer surprise. I don't know. But I only have a few minutes, so let me be brief. I am general counsel for WBW Development Group. We are the property owner of this teeny-tiny strip of land that has had so much discussion so far. And I'd like to give you a little bit of our perspective on this. First of all, development is hard. Otherwise, everybody would do it. Getting access points, hard. Getting them where you want them, even harder. And when you have neighboring properties owned by private parties, sometimes you don't get what you want, even if you can get what you need. And I think that's the situation we have here. And if anybody's going to know that in Colleen, it's going to be WBW. Over the past four-plus decades, we've put thousands of homes on the ground, at least thousands of lots. Through the course of that, there's also been times where we have donated things to the city. One of those water tower sites that we were speaking of earlier, a donation from WBW. So this is all to say that we don't always say no. Sometimes we say yes. When we say no, we have a good reason. I'm not going to go into that reason right now, because that clock's still ticking. But we think we... But we think we have a good one. As far as whether the "give it to us for free" or the one offer that you saw was adequate negotiation, we'll leave that up to somebody else. But it was not extensive. It was two emails. That's not the same. So the question before you, though, should this council exercise eminent domain for one developer? That's really not the question. The question is whether this council is going to be open to adopting a new policy where any developer in a similar situation has the remedy of eminent domain. As I'm sure you know, Texas state law expressly prohibits the use of eminent domain to confer a private benefit for a particular private party's purpose. That's Texas government code 2206001B1. Y'all aren't going to do that. You're not going to break the law. There's got to be a full reason to do it, and that's going to only be by overcoming a hurdle of, you can't just have one person. It's got to be a policy. If we're going to adopt a full policy, as I stand here today, I've got property just like Bunny Trail. It's got property in the ETJ that if eminent domain comes in to give us better access, I can develop it. I did that, I called her. That was, that was me. I'm joking with you. No, but as we stand here today, I've got property that if the city of Colleen exercises eminent domain to improve access in the ETJ, it is a benefit to me. So if that policy is one where everyone's open to doing it, now, I think that's what I'd call a paradigm shift. And that's a little bit more than a consent item, a consent agenda item. It's a much bigger deal than just saying, okay, Bunny Trail bought this property, and we need to help them out. They've got access to the north, to the south, and to the east, but they really, really want it to the west, so we need to do that. Right now, if you're on Clear Creek and Mohawk, to get over to Bunny Trail, all you've got to do is get on Clear Creek, you go up to Stinchleyter. They're a mile in either direction. You've asked many times, how does this benefit the city? I'm not sure that it does. It's a marginal benefit, because right now, they're already getting access. It's just whether or not it's preferred access for this developer. This is a different situation. And I've got 25 seconds to give back to you. Thank you so much for your time.
No, sir. I have some questions for you.
Yes, ma'am.
You identified yourself as a representative for Mr. Wydis, is that correct?
That's correct. I am his general counsel.
Okay, thank you for saying that again. I have a question. You said that you didn't have time to say why you don't, I'm assuming you don't want to give it up. You can't build on it, it's just a strip. What do you want from the city in order for us to get that strip? If you don't want us going down this road?
Well, that's, that's really part of the, the essence of the question is, should the city be stepping in when the developer just got rejected for their one offer for money? Is that enough? Does that justify the cities?
But what do you want from the person, so we can move this on? It benefits the city, because it helps the residents to have another way out, the access for it. So, I mean, are you talking about you want $100,000, $300,000 for that little strip? I guess, I don't see what the problem is, is there's no development that's going to go on it.
Well, I mean, at a bare minimum, we need a conversation. Because right now, in March of 2023, I got an email with an offer. That is the last thing that I have heard on this particular issue until this agenda showed up. So nine months of silence, and now today, there's been extensive communication. I mean, I check my email every day. I've checked it several times, waiting to talk up here.
So it's about money?
It, it's not just about money. It's about, should the city step in for a developer when they can't get it done? We'd love that, because there are times when we can't get it done.
But it benefits our residents. I don't think it's about a developer. I don't even know, I don't, I know it's not. It's about the residents that's over there. And this is not the first time. I've been on this council since 2017, and it's not our first time having this conversation about the convenience of that street, and it was just sitting there. I don't know how that became a factor, that you would leave that strip out there. I went on the council when they developed that area. It was a terrible decision. That should have been done when they was developing it. But, and I can understand, that is his land. I do, I do understand. He has that right. And all, what I'm understanding you to say, because I'm not taking a side, because as people know, the mayor does not vote, you just wanted, he wanted a conversation instead of just allowing them to take it over. Am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay. And the city need to step down, just move out the way, because you have, you don't have an ordinance in place for you to just say, we're going to step in, because this person can't have their way, so they came to the city. And that's not right.
Right. The way that Bruce described it, Mr. Wydis described it as, if this is happening to me, I want to be able to use it later when I need it. And that might be a conversation.
I like your transparency, you're honest. Councilmember Sagara.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, for my clarification, and I might have to go out there and get an idea of what we're talking about, but my understanding, it's what we're trying to do, you know, is put in the street, right? Is that what the city's trying to, you know, is, before the development, we want access, and we want to put in the street.
Yes, sir, it's a street that's on our thoroughfare master plan.
Yeah, so that's a benefit. So it's not that we're buying something so they can build houses, it's so that the city could benefit by putting in a thoroughfare there. So I just wanted to make sure of that. And I appreciate you being here, and sometimes, unfortunately, that's where it has to be resolved, is in the courts. I've been on this council long enough, and other roads come to mind, Rosewood for one, that we went back and forth, because that needed to be developed, and there was people that did not want to sell. And, you know, I'm not here to say yea or nay, you know, I agree. I think, you know, a lot of times, it's up to council, go through the court system to figure it out, unfortunately, if we cannot come to an agreement. But I appreciate that. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Right, because this has been on our radar for a long time, this area. Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mayor. My comment, I guess, was for our city attorney, Ms. Clemens. I'm not familiar on how eminent domain or condemnation proceedings go. Isn't there typically a hearing? And is it someone else who decides, other than the two parties involved?
This is just the first step with this particular request. With this particular request, we're following the ordinance, where you get a petition from a property owner requesting that the city use condemnation in this particular, in this particular circumstance. If council does decide to give that authority, use condemnation authority, we would go through the whole procedure of eminent domain, which would, which would include bona fide offer, and then if there couldn't be an agreement established to voluntarily transfer the property, then going through, that, that would also, the eminent domain procedure would require that the court appoint special commissioners, and then we would have a special commissioners' hearing, so there's that whole process. So this is just the very initial step before all of that, just to let the city get involved in all.
Okay, so if none of the parties can come into agreement, the finality of this process would be a hearing in a court of special commissioners, not city folk, not WBW folk, not Bunny Trail LP people, but it would be a court of law with special commissioners that would make the ultimate decision, is that correct?
If we couldn't come to an agreement, that's right.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, sir. Anything else you would like to say? You have 18 seconds.
No, once again, thank you for your time. May I be excused?
Yes, sir, thank you. Mr. Cagle.
Just to clarify, the land for the elevated storage tank was not a gift. It was a negotiation, and there was give and take, and it was part of a signed development agreement. And if they would like to renegotiate that, I'd be more than happy to start on it.
Madam Sec-, I mean, Madam City Attorney, I just want to, I cut off Councilmember Board and Mayor Protem when they were talking. So here are my, and this is all the citizen comments, thank you all for coming up here to speak, that was nice. Councilmember Board made a statement that when a, when a resident get up there and they just get to going and going, and you're trying to get order, and one of the things his concerns was his business, his personal life, what he does as a professional. For the record, if you discuss that, you off the agenda. I just want to get some clarification on that.
There are, so certainly, personal attacks that are completely unrelated to city business would be off of the agenda.
Okay.
However, there may be things that can be brought up about, about council members that may relate to the agenda, that could, could be related to the agenda, and can be properly, properly brought before you.
So Councilmember Board, the statement, which is not correct according to Councilmember Board, that he's putting money in his pocket, that is off the agenda, correct? He's benefiting from the project?
If there's, if he's saying, if somewhat, whether it's, I mean, I'm not speaking to the, the truth or the veracity of that statement, but that statement does appear to be related to the agenda.
Okay, I just want some clarity, because when we move into 2025, I don't, I don't want to hinder the process of us going backwards and forward with residents. I just think that we need to really sit down with the city attorney and get some clarity on what they can and cannot say about personal things. And I just don't want you to be like I'm blowing you off in any kind of way. I just want clarity on, as we move forward. But I just want to make some correction before we take this quick break, about downtown Colleen. There's a lot of bad things that happen in the world, and we've been hosting events, and Chief Lopez, I need you to come up. We've been hosting events downtown Colleen. Our police department, this council support our first responders 1,000%. Everything they have requested from us, we have been, have voted on it to give it to them freely. It was no hesitation. We have supported them 100%. Downtown Colleen, what you, you don't have to go into all the security measures, do you feel as our chief of police, because we just got a high recommendation from you that you can go out there and you can catch drug dealers, and you can catch murderers, but you're the same chief that set up the protection for downtown Colleen? Tell me, is it safe downtown Colleen for residents to come down to attend our events?
Yes, I agree, there's always room for improvement, and that's something my staff is currently looking at. Mr. Reynolds and I are supposed to meet next week after the event that happened in New Orleans.
Correct.
Has always been one of my concerns. We have to look at force protection measures, and that includes physical barriers, not just only classic barricades, the wooden barricades. We also have to look at environmental issues, like increasing the lighting in the area. That's something Mr. Cagle and I have discussed, and Mr. Reynolds and I, Mrs. Zager's, are trying to work on the project to improve the lighting. And especially after New Orleans, my staff has come up with a proposal to put 70 bollards around downtown Colleen, but that's going to cost at an expense of $997,000 to install those barriers. Another thing we have to consider, as the council and as the downtown event coordinators, is shortening the route. Right now, in my opinion, the route, a mile and a half, a mile and three-quarters, is too long. It makes it harder for the police department or anybody to protect that route. And Mr. Reynolds has offered his dump trucks as barricades in those events, but when we have a mile and a half stretch of road that we have to protect, I don't think Mr. Reynolds has enough public works trucks to help us block those trees. Have you noticed I have increased staffing?
You have.
In that area, to make sure we're as safe as possible, but there's always room for improvement, and that's something that in the next few months, I'm going to come to council with a proposal to better secure our downtown events.
Do you think the council should recommend to Mr. Cagle to cancel downtown events?
Oh, yes, I think we should have, as a city, we should have downtown events.
We should or we should not?
We should have downtown events.
Okay, thank you.
She asked you if they should be canceled.
If they should be canceled.
Oh, should be canceled.
Should we cancel all our events downtown?
No, I think we should put more resources to make sure they're safer.
Thank you. Councilmember Board.
Madam, I'm going to switch the topic a little bit back to what you mentioned prior to the police chief's comment that's relating to, I guess, the Bunny Trail deal.
Oh, wait a minute, because we have someone else got a question for him.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, Council, Mayor Protem, I apologize.
So sure, I do think 100% that the questions that were asked by the constituent were fair. We've had these conversations, though, about what we could take as far as proactive measures to make sure that we are taking all of these things into consideration, right? Regarding our safety of our community. One of the things that we don't want to, you know, we have to take into consideration as well, when we're looking at our downtown events, is boosting our economy, increasing our property value, is generating tax revenues. There's a lot of benefits to doing that. Even in the most tragic of situations, the most unfortunate situations, the following day, once they were able to get going, even in situations like New Orleans or 9/11, they were up an atom as a show of resilience in those communities as well. So I do think it is important that we are transparent and do let the community know that we are actively communicating, though, that these conversations are being had regarding how can we improve the safety of our community, so that we can continue to maintain our quality of life, not live in fear, and ultimately, still be able to enjoy the things that we enjoy without putting our first responders at an increased risk. So thank you again for that. I appreciate this conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Is there anything else for the good of the council? The other thing, when our council come up to speak, my staff come up to speak, our staff residents are experts. They have the degrees and the certifications to stand behind that podium and give a recommendation that this council will listen to. There are others that come up to the podium. They do not have that certification, they do not have the degrees to support it. So we do listen to our council. We listen to our staff and residents, we do listen to you. We will take a five-minute break. All right, we have four council members. We're going to get this, call this meeting back to order. We have not completed our citizen comments. With that being said, if there are any other council members would like to have any citizen comments before I move forward. Councilmember Board.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In alignment with the agenda and the item that we were speaking on earlier relating to, right, citizen comments.
The citizen comments, I was getting another council member.
No problem, okay.
Oh, citizen comments, we still in that area. We haven't moved on to the next, our council meeting.
Absolutely. Just going to make this statement that in alignment with the agenda and discussion on the Bunny Trail project, without going into discussion, there were some accusations made by a citizen that I need to make sure clear is absolute misinformation, false, and unproving. Thank you.
Thank you. And council, I'm going to reiterate this. We are, Colleen is future focus. You was elected by the people, I cannot tell you what to do, because you don't work directly for me. But I'm hoping in 2024, what happened back then, it stays back there with this council. As we move in 2025, I don't care about the taxes, as long as it's on the agenda, but if it's not, I will do my job and correct it. We're not, we're not doing that Tom and Jerry show anymore, not us. I can't control the residents that come here, but this council, we're going to go in 2025 knowing that our future of Colleen is depending up on us. All right? You're welcome. With that being said, this will be your first vote in 2025, and I'm so excited, I'm so excited, so excited. All right. This is the regular session. Council, you have three minutes to speak three times each. And I am happy to say, Madam Secretary, consent agenda.
MN 25001, MN 25002, RS 25001, RS 25002, RS 25003, RS 25004, RS 25005, RS 25006, RS 27007, RS 25008, and OR 25001. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance of the city of Colleen, of the city council of the city of Colleen, Texas, amending the North Colleen Revitalization Program, alleviating minimum off-street parking requirements within the North Colleen revitalization area, providing a savings clause providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for a severability clause, providing for publication and an effective date."
Councilmember Board.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just need to have a question for clarity, for legal. I intend to vote and recuse myself from RS-25-008. How is that going to be accomplished?
You can request that Item 10 be removed from consent agenda, and then the council would vote separately on that item?
Okay, I'll make that request.
Councilmember Solomon, I noticed that you have clicked on to approve the agenda, but when you approve the agenda, could you please have Item RS-25-008 be taken off the consent agenda?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda and without the RS-25-008.
Thank you. Councilmember Alvarez?
Mayor, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. The motion carries seven to zero. We will now go to RS-25-008. Councilmember Board will not be voting on this item. Can I get a motion to approve RS-25-008? Councilmember Alvarez?
Mayor, I move to approve as presented.
Councilmember Solomon?
Second.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero with Councilmember Board abstaining from the vote. Madam Secretary, public hearing.
PH 25001. Hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Datat Bataher Casey on behalf of Bumn and N Young Lee, case number Z 2432, to rezone approximately .49 acres out of the A Dixon survey, abstract number 266, 710, 1021, from B3 Local Business District to B4 Business District. The subject property is locally addressed as 3,000 Lake Road, Colleen, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the City of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of approximately .459 acres being part of the A Dixon survey, abstract number 266, 710, 1021, from B3 Local Business District to B4 Business District, providing a savings clause providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Council, Mrs. Messner? Is the applicant here, and would he or she like to speak? Is the applicant here, and would? Hello, sir. How are you doing? Please state both of your names for the record.
Bumindee. Poshing in B U M, last name L E E.
Okay, sir.
Dong Kim.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, do you have that?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right, sir. You have four minutes.
I'm here with the bum Lee. He's the one who owned the property on Lake Road, and he's got a prospect tenant who want to open up the liquor store at his plaza. So he want to change the zoning. So he can get the tenant can open up the liquor store.
Yes, sir, thank you. Is there anything else?
That's all.
All right, thank you both. We will now hold our public hearing. Melissa Brown, public hearing is open.
Not that you started 2025 by actually hearing the citizens or what we say, but remember, like you reminded us for Featherline, you weren't dealing with the details of what was going to go there.
Ma'am, that is not on the agenda. Please stick to the public hearing item.
Like you said on the Featherline zoning, you weren't deciding on what was going on the property. You were deciding, deciding on the zoning. In this case, you were not deciding on a liquor store going into one of those suites. Thank you, I was on the agenda. What you're deciding on is the zoning for it, so you're designing, deciding to allow this to be a B4. So that would include if the liquor store goes out of business, trailer rentals and sales, auto sales, because we're requesting it for that entire building, not just that suite, auto sales for used cars, no salvage, commercial parking, muffler shop, auto repair, cold storage plant, building material or lumber sales, cleaning and pressing guarding shop, let's talk about the trade school businesses, halfway houses, and of course, the liquor stores as long as they comply with T C B A. I would note that what wasn't mentioned in the presentation, even though it's not a school or a daycare or a church, across the street from this location is the Girl Scout Council. So you have Girl Scout troops that go over there on a daily basis and use it for their meetings. Why would we look at that differently than if we were putting it across the street from a daycare? That's a safe haven and a safe place for these young girls to go. I don't think this is, this is the right location for a liquor store. I fail to see how this is making it a complete neighborhood. Are we saying that the only way to have a complete neighborhood is have direct access to a liquor store? There are already two different corner stores there and the Dollar General that all sell alcohol of some kind. It's just not hard liquor. If you need hard liquor, then you should be able to go someplace else to get it. But is this where B4 zoning should be? In the midst of all of these residential areas, right next to the Girl Scout Council? Is that what we need to be representing to them? That that's what's going to make a complete neighborhood? That that's what fits in with the character of that area? Is that's what is going to benefit the residents who live there? How will the lives of any residents in the Lake and Bundren area be improved by having a liquor store within walking distance? I can't think of any ways that would be improved.
I'm sorry, I, you said something, but I didn't hear you. I have four minutes, okay. But your mic's not on, so I wouldn't, you know, I am a little deaf, so I apologize. Yeah, echo, echo, okay. This is a neighborhood, right? Yeah, this is in a neighborhood. It's not a shopping center. I mean, it's a little convenience section, right? So let's, let's sell addictive material to your citizens. Let's make it more convenient for them to get drunk, right? Let's make it more convenient. What are we getting? We're getting a few, few pennies on the dollar for taxes? All to go ahead and then support the, the homeless, right? Because they all go for that cheap liquor, that little pint. Irish Rose, the Night Train, the Mad Dog, that super cheap, right? And they get drunk and they get out there. Okay, let me go play with the little, the little girls across the street. That's not fun. It happens right on my street, right down here in Hallmark. Already, I, I see it. It's on my street. I helped a guy go into, into rehab because he couldn't stop drinking because the access to the alcohol was so easily and so available right there. I'm just saying, how much is enough? We got, we got, almost every corner, you have a corner store. Almost every corner, you have a liquor store. How many liquor stores do we really need? And do we need it in our neighborhoods? I, I'm just saying, you know, there's a lot more to look here, and then all the, you know, it could be anything else, right? We can make it all this other stuff, too. So I, I just think that, you know, opening this up in the neighborhoods is not the right area. If this was somewhere along Veterans, right? That's not a state highway, you know, Veterans Memorial 190, which is not a state highway. I think that if you want to open up a liquor store along there, like they did right there on Second Street or 10th Street, that's fine. But down inside the neighborhoods, let's kind of like, let's get away from that. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Lee or Mr. Kim, would y'all like to speak again? Because you did fill out a citizen comment form. Would you like to speak again on this item? Are you okay?
I just heard that, you know, liquor store is not a, it's not a good, it's not a good store, you know, I mean, he had a shopping plaza there for about last 20, more than 20 years, and he had a problem renting out all of them. So finally, you know, the one, he couldn't rent it out for the last three years, he just got a, a good offer from the prospect tenant. I think it'll be okay to put a liquor store there. I don't think it'll makes any neighborhood, you know, bad, anything like that. I know a few other liquor store around the residential area, they doing fine, you know, I don't see the problems. Thank you.
Councilmember Segaro, did you have, this is still?
No, go ahead. Go ahead and close it.
Okay. Public hearing is closed. Madam, Mrs. Messner, would you please come up? Because I don't want the wrong thing to get out in public because it's important that people know that we're listening, but we also correcting. As a winner of the Women of Distinction for Girl Scouts of America, the Girl Scout building that's over there, that's in that area where everybody was notified, correct? Were they notified, that building and the people that work over there?
I'm not exactly sure which building is the Girl Scout building, so.
Would you please find it before we move on and vote? Is it anywhere near the liquor store?
Can we pull up the, the notification map?
Thank you. Mr. Kegel, can you pull up your map? Oh, here it come, right here.
So this is the aerial. I don't know exactly which building. Direct, this building here? Okay, so.
Go back.
Trying to get to the notification map. There we go. So yes, they would have, they would have received, oops, there we go. It's this property here, they're within the notification map, so they would have received notice.
Did you receive anything from them? A phone call?
No, ma'am.
A letter, a email?
No, ma'am.
All right. Also in that area, since we talking about it, is there any convenience stores over in that area?
Let's go back to the aerial.
It is some over there. They sell liquor.
There's a Dollar General next door. I don't believe they sell liquor. The, the, the gas station most likely sells alcohol.
Market, the gas station, mhm.
I don't believe they sell liquor, but they'll sell beer and wine.
Mhm, they sell beer and wine. Okay, so council, here go your options. That's over there off, okay. Here go your options, and you have heard from the residents, and you heard from staff. So what is your decision, Councilmember Segaro?
I know every time we get a liquor store, it's always a concern for our residents, but one of the things, and I've asked this question before, if, if you're buying liquor from a liquor store, are you able to drink that at the liquor store? How about outside in the parking lot, or any?
Stores are that you can, you can purchase for off-premise consumption, not on-premise consumption?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, because a lot of times, you know, you open up a restaurant, they serve liquor. Well, they can drink that there. They can drive home drunk. Well, a liquor store, you can't do that. You just have to buy that and mosey on, so.
That's right.
I just want to make sure that that's still the rule.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
001, Councilmember Segaro. Councilmember Alvarez. Councilmember Alvarez? You don't, who, oh, that's Solomon. Councilmember Solomon? Okay, all in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Everybody, if you focus, you know it's time to vote. So Councilmember Board voted against it. Councilmember Alvarez voted no. And Councilmember Cobb abstained. Board voted no. Councilmember Alvarez voted no. And the motion passes four to three. Madam Secretary, whenever you run.
PH 25002. Hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Jim Wright Company on behalf of Kudra Rentals Limited, case number Z 2433, to rezone Lot 1, Block 1, North 10th Edition from B2 Local Retail District to B3 Local Business District. The subject property is locally addressed as 1005 North 10th Street, Colleen, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the City of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of Lot 1, Block 1, North 10th Edition from B2 Local Retail District to B3 Local Business District, providing a savings clause providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is the applicant here, and would you like to speak?
I don't need to speak.
Okay. Yes, sir. We'll get back to that if they do. Thank you, sir. We will now open it up for public hearing. Melissa Brown.
So again, I don't really have an issue with having a mortuary at that location if there is no funeral being held there. Funerals would be difficult for parking, for traffic. However, keep in mind, once it's approved as a B3, you can't go back and say, well, it's a B3, but you can't do A, B, and C on your newly approved B3 property. So they could open up a hospital, nursing home, assisted living, appliance sales, boat accessory sales, rental and service, bowling alley, oil and lube station, floor shop, couldn't be bad, cafeteria catering service, marine supply sales and service, tennis or swim, swim club, hotel or motel would be good there, wouldn't it? Another gas station, a car wash, auto parts sales, either new, new and at retail, rather. Custom, customarily incidental use, sale of beer and/or wine for off-premise consumption, a storage warehouse. We need more storage locations, don't we? It's, again, not just about what the project is, it's about what the zoning is, and is the zoning appropriate for that location? When everything around it is residential and dense population residential at that, if it's approved and they end up having funeral services there and the citizens start complaining, well, there's nothing you can say because you knew about it in advance. If it ends up not being a mortuary because it's B3 and it becomes one of those other things and the citizens start complaining, y'all have nobody to fall back on because you're making the. y'all have nobody to fall back on because you're making the decisions. You want to talk about being proactive, thinking about the future, making plans for everything. Maybe you should think about what it could be, not just what this one project is. Four of you failed to do that on the last one. The mayor keeps forcing you or inciting you to vote in favor of them by telling you, I want a motion to approve. It's not her job to say, I want a motion to approve from you. You're the council. You get to decide if you want to make a motion to approve or a motion to disapprove. And in this case, you have to decide, are all of those other items there? Are they applicable? Should they be something in a neighborhood surrounded by duplexes and fourplexes and apartments? If the answer is no, then whether the mortuary would be a good idea or not is your responsibility to disapprove this.
Mr. Price, it's your time.
Thank you. Again, City Council. Mrs. Brown kind of answered the question that I had, right? And I don't know if there is an ability to limit to specificity on the zoning, right? I don't know if that's even feasible. But I think that there should be something in our ordinances that allow you as City Council to do that very thing, to be very specific in your allowances when you go to make these considerations for putting a business in a residential area, right? That it's only going to be that. It's not going to be all this other stuff. Or it's going to be a very, very limited, maybe two or three things that it could be. All right, great, right? Been around a lot of dead bodies, okay? And worked in the hospital, worked with the morgue, did all the x-rays on those bodies. It's not, you know, it's not a problem seeing a black bag in a hearse. But seeing a hearse and seeing a black bag being pulled out of it, you kind of understand what you're looking at. So natural curiosity does happen. So you're going to have events at this facility. And I think, you know, that's something that the owner is going to have to take a look at. And, but that's something that y'all have to look at, is that the disrespect that might come to someone's family member. So, and not only that, I would ask that if we do do something like this, that there is an apprenticeship program through our high schools for an advantageous situation to learn about mortuary services. I think it is a predominant service that we can all benefit from because we're all going to die sooner or later. So, but I concur with Mrs. Brown that y'all are going to put all these other items in there that could, you know, pop up in there. So that's my main concern is that when, if this system should fail for whatever reason, and then it comes up to somebody else and they can do whatever they want, right? Because y'all, y'all decided that they could, it might affect the children and the residents there in that neighborhood later on down the line when y'all are all gone, right? At your beach house somewhere, right? All right, thank you for your time.
Mr. Wright, you signed up for citizen comments. Would you like to say anything? And council, just for FYI, you have the options to have an empty building or you can have a building where someone is occupying it and bringing in revenue that it help regardless what goes in that area. Mr. Wright, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor and Council. The only thing I'd like to say, I think everybody's heard, there's, but it's a 1,500 square foot building. So I don't think you could put a bowling alley or 90% of the things that Mrs. Brown issued. There is plenty of parking. There's three parking places in the front. And then there's parking along the other side that is, can be shared with the apartments or whatever. But parking is not a problem. And the only thing I wanted to say is that about 90% of the things Mrs. Brown mentioned couldn't ever go in there because there's not room, number one. The building's 1,500 square feet. I've never seen a bowling alley at 1,500 square feet. But if I have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions to Mr. Wright? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Open meeting is closed. Can I get a motion to approve? Councilmember Adams.
Mayor, I move to approve. I'm sorry.
Somebody's talking. Mr. Price, you know better. Councilmember Adams, what was your motion, sir?
I moved to approve PH 25-002.
Thank you. Councilmember Segaro.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. The motion carries, okay, here we go again. The motion carries with Councilmember Board no and Councilmember Solomon abstain. So the motion passes five to two with one no and one abstain. Madam Secretary, Councilmember requests for future agenda item. As you all know, future agenda item is a yes or a no. It's not a whole discussion. He said, we vote up, we vote down. Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor, Council, I am requesting that we bring back at the first meeting of the year, a discussion on conducting neighborhood walk after a presentation and a draft resolution is presented. With that, I move. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No. First of all, you cannot say that because we already in our first meeting of the year.
I said in February.
On February?
Yeah.
Okay, we didn't hear February. Mr. Kegel, did you, no, we didn't hear.
All right.
So with that being said, council, do you have any questions on Mr. Adams? Okay, Mr. Adams, I do have a question. What make, two questions. One is, what makes this different than the comprehensive plan when we took staff? We took residents, we took everybody input, we did the walkthrough through all the neighborhoods. The residents gave their input. The second thing, what is the difference between Councilmember Solomon and Councilmember Cobb having town hall meetings? By the way, all council members should be doing that to get input from the residents. So what are the difference? Then we doing our job and we pulling staff to do it for us. What is the difference?
As you mentioned, this is something I will bring back for discussion if you guys approve for discussion.
But you just gave a overview. I'm trying to see. We need to know more about it.
Okay, the difference is, this is a regular walk with city leadership, police, and other pertinent departments just to bring councilmembers closer, sponsored by the cities. It'll be at least four times a year.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. To bring this back.
Madam Mayor, was there a second to that motion?
Oh, any second. No, it may die. I'm sorry.
I didn't actually finish the motion. The motion was that we moved and placed the neighborhood walk program proposed on the agenda for our first meeting in February for discussion and potential adoption.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Oh, wait a minute. I'm sorry. Stop, stand by, stand by. Okay, well, all right. Can I get a, are you finished? Did you want to say something? Did you want him to do it again? Because we needed a second. No, that's why it died. I asked twice for a second. Am I correct, Madam City Attorney?
Yes, you did. Okay, I'll leave it. I'll leave it the way it is.
No, 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 no. If there's some misunderstanding, we don't do that in 2025. Do y'all want to do a no motion or something? Because I'm ready to get to the point.
I like clarity. I'm not clear on what exactly is wanting to be presented, if you could go deeper into it.
Question, before we go into that, Councilmember Board, there was no second to the motion. Can we discuss this?
I'll second it.
I got one some legal now because, you know, it can come back to hurt us all. Yes, ma'am.
There was no second on the motion, but if there's another motion to be made, we're still on that item. So I would be fine with that.
Madam Mayor, at this point, where are we?
You stopped everything. We had a motion to adjourn, but you wanted to...
Make the motion to adjourn. I'll second the motion to adjourn so we can move forward.
He won't even, I'm sorry. Councilman Segaro, he was talking. You know you wrong for that. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no.
Yes, yes, no.
I'm sorry about that, Councilmember Board. He got one over on me. Meeting adjourned.